Those are. Okay.
I'm the only one allowed in the room.
Thank you. Speaking at my funeral.
I don't know if I am. And I'm not going to cry.
Tackle people that.
Really, I'm gonna fake crying. And I'm gonna bury my birthday.
That's good thinking. I have some other chairs. Amy, whenever you're ready.
Hey, how are you?
City of Perkins' regular meeting Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 6:00 P.M.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
And Veronica is, uh...
Goodie. Pray with me, please. Father, we just come to you tonight and we ask that you give us guidance. Give us some wisdom and discernment as we make decisions that will help benefit our city. Thank you for our city staff, and I pray you have your protection over all of our staff. In Jesus' precious name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to accept this consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll second.
Justin, did you motion?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number six. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. Moving on to number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the City of Perkins' operating budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Staff report?
Mayor, we neglected to bring the budget packets over for your consideration. I wonder if you wouldn't mind moving down a couple of items, and I'll go get there with those.
Okay, I got mine. Okay, we're gonna skip over to... Amy, what'd you say? Yeah, nine, thanks, Father. We're gonna skip over to nine, and we will come back to seven and eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Charlie Butler for inspection services July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, at a flat fee of $1,500 per month.
This is a little bit of an increase for Charlie, but he does all the plan reviews, all the inspections. He's certified in everything, and an absolute life saver. He was the... In his previous life, before he retired, he was the Director of Development Services for Edmund. So he knows what he's doing.
And, uh...
I would highly recommend approval, and it is in the budget that way.
He's been with the city for how long?
Three or four years.
Four minutes. Oh, I'm done. Yeah, okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve agreement with Charlie Butler for inspection services July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025, at a flat fee of $1,500 per month.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 10. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve 2022... 2024, the 2025 agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 142.
The agreement is essentially the same. There's the 5% increase was put in, and then, under the deputy chief pay scale, it switched from being in Step A from three years to being in Step A for one year, and then B for two years to match the lieutenant.
Commissioners, any questions?
Everything is budgeted that way.
Any questions? I make a motion that we approve the 2024-2025 agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge number 142.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Rachel, are you ready to go back to number seven?
Yes.
Okay. No, you're fine, sweetheart. I've got one. Thank you. You're welcome. Amy, I'm just gonna go ahead and officially do number seven. Good. Number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the City of Perkins' operating budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. Staff report? Anything to say? After she catches her breath.
You've got Bob City Man... So this packet is the same thing, only different from the last time we looked at it. This is the official one that goes to the state auditor's office, so it contains the things that are required by the state. You've got Bob City Manager's budget messaging here with some very cool graphs and charts. You've got the public hearing notice that was published in the newspaper. You've got the resolution with the proposed budget amounts, and then the revenue category and the expense category. Those did not change from last time, except for the conversation that was held about increasing the commercial sewer rates, and so then that way we would use a little less prior year carry forward. Those are the only two numbers that changed in all of that.
Can I answer questions? Do you want to answer them? Commissioners, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Perkins' operating budget for fiscal years 2024-2025.
I think we do that on eight.
I think it's eight.
Eight?
Yeah. Because this is just the discussion part.
I think if you wanted to direct us to do something different, that would be the action of that item.
I think everything that needed changes has already been done.
You did a mighty fine job with it. Thank you.
So, uh, we're gonna move on to number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution number 4-2024, adopting the City of Perkins' operating budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 in the amount of $5,959,568.
I won't steal your thunder, you can have this one.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 4-2024, adopting the City of Perkins' operating budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 with an amount of $5,959,568.
It's awful, isn't it?
It is.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Okay, we're gonna skip back down over to number 11 and continue on. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve ordinance number 500, an ordinance amending City... Amending Perkins City Code Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 7, Establishment of Districts, Article C, Commercial Districts, Section 10-7(c)(3), uses by review, and Chapter 11, Home Occupations, Section 10-11-4, Restrictions, and Section 10-11-7, Procedures. Goodness, I have a mouthful. Um, ba-dum-bum. I read all that. I'll never get that time back in my life.
I didn't understand it, could you read it again?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I read all of this.
Oh, yeah, so did I.
Almost fell off the treadmill. Staff report?
Let me give you a little bit of a round here. This is an amendment to the zoning code, which, um... When you're looking at an amendment to the zoning code, that has to, by ordinance, go through Planning Commission first. I'm understanding this Planning Commission recommended approval. What was the vote? Do you know?
It was unanimous.
Five, zero, or four, zero, or whatever you were there. Okay. So, yeah, I thought we want to always tell you that. And, um, under our zoning code, we have different classifications or districts, like commercial district, residential district, industrial. This is an amendment to the Code section regarding commercial districts. And in this section, we have had a... An ordinance that was called Uses by Review. Okay? And I'll talk about what those are a little bit. But first, I just want to tell you that I'm unaware of any others to be... Except for maybe one that uses the term uses by review. It's commonly called specific use permit. And so I've even... I've received phone calls from people, attorneys for developers, and they've said, "Y'all have a specific use permit, because I can't find any. I can't find anything." And it's like, "Yeah, we just call it this weird thing." So to make... Just to kind of clarify it, we're changing the language from uses by review to specific use permit, so that it's just more in line with what people are looking for when they look at our ordinance and what we... Most people call it. So, um, this specific... So in a zoning classification, you have uses by right. If I buy a piece of property, there are certain uses that I just buy right. I can go make of it. Okay? A specific use permit requires you... Or the ordinance, specific use ordinance requires the landowner or developer to actually get permission from you if they're wanting to do... If they're wanting to construct something on some commercial use that's on this list. Okay? And then it gives you and the Planning Commission the opportunity... To the Planning Commission the opportunity to review and recommend to you, and then you guys decide if you feel like this specific use is appropriate for this specific place, whether it will not adversely impact the community. The community as a whole. The ones that may was, it had said before, you know, if it doesn't impact... Adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood, and we were suggesting that you change that to the whole city. You know, they'll just look at the neighbors, but look at the city as a whole. So you'll see those changes on that first page. And then we've... The... We see a long list of uses, possible commercial uses, that we've added. Well, there was already a list. We've added different uses to this, so that this... So that you all can better control what's being developed in the city. If someone wants to create gun-shooting range in the city, that you guys get the chance to look at whether they're putting it in the proper place, what conditions you might want to add, things along those lines, if they want, if they're putting a mausoleum, you know, or just whatever. I will tell you that David Wadofford, who you all know, is a good teacher, is... I've heard him teach on specific use permits. He's a fan. If you look at Sand Springs ordinance, it's got way... It's got more than we are even adding here. But this is just some of the things that we would... You'd like to be able to control most is our marijuana-related grows and distribution and sales and, um, cell towers, small cell units, things along those lines. And, you know, and those are... Those are on here.
I don't think marijuana retail is on there. I don't specifically.
No, you're right. Marijuana retail is not on there.
That's because the state exempted municipalities.
Right. So, um, I think that's really the only changes that... Changes that we made. Oh, we did add that if someone gets a specific use permit, that it's void if they don't use it, or if they...
Excellent.
Don't use it within a certain period of time, or they start the use and then it's abandoned. So that's that paragraph H. Questions?
It puts the power with the commission. That's the purpose.
Wide range of choices. Commissioners, do you might have any questions?
Oh, let me just also say that when I was looking at this today, I realized that I had failed to make a change in paragraph A on the first page. There are about five or six sentences down, and it says, we're talking about permitted uses, other uses here and after referred to as... And it still says uses by review. And it should say specific use. And so I asked Rachel to go ahead and make that change in the final version that you are voting on tonight. And I didn't feel like you necessarily... I'd want her to have to make more paper to bring that to you in a new version. But the final version that you would be voting on does have that script nurse error corrected.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I think it looks good.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 500, an ordinance amending Perkins City Code Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 7, Establishment of Districts, Article C, Commercial Districts, Section 10-7(c)(3), Uses by Review, and Chapter 11, Home Occupations, Section 10-11-4, Restrictions, and Sections 10-11-7, Procedures.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 12. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on declaring an emergency on ordinance number 500. You want that one, Jason?
Yeah, I'll take it.
I'll make a motion that we declare an emergency on ordinance 500.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 13. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve ordinance number 501, an ordinance amending Title 7, Public Ways and Property, Chapter 2, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Areas of Perkins City Code, to add Section 7-2-9, Permit Required, and 7-2-10, Restoration of Property and City Costs, and renumber the previous 7-2-9 penalty to 7-2-11, and amending Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 18, Earth Change Permit, Section 10-18-7, Exemptions. Jeez. Could y'all make this shorter? Staff?
There are cities in Oklahoma who have ride-away management ordinances, and that's what this is essentially. There are... There is a push. I've had other city attorneys, just in the listserv that I'm on, what city attorneys say, "Does anybody have a ride-away management?" Because it's time to start managing the people who use our ride-aways, usually mostly utilities, but it can be... It can be, you know, lots of people. So, uh, this is a short version. Stillwater has a version that is way more complicated. One thing we know is that if we add permits, we add one permit requirement, there's got to be someone at City Hall who's gonna deal with those applications. And so you always have to think about staffing to comply. But this is... This would require the providers who install or construct more than 100 linear feet of utility lines or cut pavement to get a permit. And that would be if they're within any defined ride-away. So that could be our ride-away, that could be ODOT ride-away, but it's within our city limits, and we want to know when someone's working within ride-away. And basically, it just says you gotta apply, give us the plans, you gotta pay for it if you don't have a franchise agreement with us. You've gotta get ride-away permits from ODOT if you're working on ODOT ride-away. Mr. Sk... Sometimes provide us with proof that you're insured, and just stuff that we can rely on. A traffic control plan, that's huge, because sometimes they're blocking our street. So, and then one thing that's added is that they have to get an earth change permit. So, um, the rest of it's fairly... If they're going to be boring, there's an additional... Some additional stuff that they need to provide. And then we... So that's the first section. The second section, Section 2, is an added provision as well that talks about the restoration of the property. So once they... Once they go in, they need to put it back. And then what happens if they don't? They pay our costs that...
Our city occurs. Sidewalk over there?
That could be an example.
Yes. Lover's land? Yes.
It's fixed, and then one's gotten worse, but...
And then we changed... Because we added these provisions, we just changed the number on the penalty provision. And then, um, because we're requiring an applicant to get an earth change permit, we changed our earth change permit ordinance, 10... Section 10, Chapter 11. I'll just say 10-18-7. We took out a provision that excluded or exempted them from having to get earth change permits. So that's what that last red line is, is just taking out, um, from our ordinance, an exemption for earth change permits. If you're gonna be regrading, we kind of want to know that, too. It's all affects our drainage system. So that's...
We just want to know what's going on, what they're putting in, and then that they fix it back correctly when they leave. Doesn't seem like too much to ask.
Not at all.
And a lot of the stuff's in state law.
Good business practices.
But it's...
Communication.
Yes.
Kind of forces communication.
Okay.
Is a procedure for communication.
Commissioners, anything?
No, it's my turn. I'll take this one.
You'll drink a water before you read that?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 501, an ordinance amending Title 7, Public Ways and Property, Chapter 2, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Areas of Public City... Of Perkins City Code, to add Section 7-2-9, Permit Required, and 7-2-10, Restoration of Property and Cities Costs, and renumber the previous 7-2-9 penalty to 7-2-11, and amending Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 18, Earth Change Permit, Section 10-18-7, Exemptions.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor? Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
You just hopped right on that yes, didn't you? Like, you're gonna get it out. Number 14. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on declaring an emergency on the ordinance number 501. Commissioners?
Make a motion to declare an emergency on ordinance.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Sarah. All right, 15. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to accept Oklahoma Gas and Electric OGN E proposal to elevate or relocate the existing overhead line to accommodate the installation of the 30-foot decorative streetlights on North Main Street at a cost of $140,578.38, a cost reduction from the original amount of $155,137...
Thirty, huh?
...and 36 cents, approved at the December 13, 2022 meeting.
So my dear friend Kimberly Adams from OGN E, the person trapped in the middle of this saga, is here.
Saga.
Basically, she worked very hard to kind of broker some sort of agreement, and I feel like it's a fair agreement. It's not ideal. We would have liked to have had notice that they were coming in to do all that stuff. Previous agenda item. But we don't get that, and according to OGN E, this is basically the best we'll get. But they're willing to raise... And I put that wording in there to elevate or relocate, because the emailer... What she sent was pretty specific, like they're gonna put seven 50-foot poles. But I didn't want to get so specific, we run into a problem later if they have some issues, so I kind of broadened it a little bit. They're gonna move their line up, so our decorative lights can fit under it and still have the... And have a clear span, so that they don't hit the... Power lines don't hit the lights and cause issues. And it's also a little bit cheaper than our previous agreement, which was a little bit of a surprise, but...
I counted the poles the other day. How many poles are out there?
That's a question that we need... Because we thought it was 30, but it's not. It's 30 foot. So how many poles is that gonna be? I think there's 12 poles.
Do we need the exact number?
No, I was asking... I was just curious, as the electrical poles that are out there now, I was just curious.
How many electrical poles?
Yeah, how many electrical poles are out there? Because you are reducing...
I think there's 10 or 11.
Yeah, it's being reduced. I mean, substantially, really.
Well, the number of wooden poles is not being reduced.
Okay.
I don't think. The number of wooden poles, they're extending their length.
Okay.
So it's a...
So they're replacing it with longer, wider poles?
Yes. 30-foot, 35-foot poles or something now, and there's gonna be 50-footers in there. Because that's the problem they had when they put the... If wind comes and sways the line, it would slap the lights, which causes problems.
We don't need any of that.
So this is... They've agreed to, at their expense, which was fairly significant, to move that line up. I mean, there may be somewhere out there where they jog it over two feet or something. That's why I kind of left it. I didn't want to, I mean, get super technical and then have to come back to a meeting.
Okay.
Timeline?
I'm going to say that I will beat this to death to get it done as quickly as possible. I don't... I'd be speaking out of turn if I told you, but it is in everyone's radar screen.
Well, and they have a lot, I mean, tornadoes and...
I get that. Just...
I don't know of a timeline.
And I haven't... I haven't asked either. I've just been trying to get this worked out, but I can let Bob know just as soon as we can go forward.
Because the decorative poles are...
They're there.
They're there, in a warehouse somewhere, just waiting, right?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
And there's plans that you've all agreed to that show how many poles and where they're gonna be placed and all of that?
Yes.
There's a... We do a line study?
That's been done.
I don't have that with me.
That was done two years ago. And agreed upon.
Long time, huh?
Yes.
Too long. Commissioners, anything? Nothing? Anything else?
I would recommend approval. I think... I think they're doing us a favor. I mean, we had a different option of doing shorter poles, but I think these'll look better, and from a safety standpoint, I think it's important to get...
Absolutely.
Move them.
Okay.
Commissioners? I just...
Yeah, state... Go, come on up. Just state your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Kimberly Adams. And 321 North Harvey, Oklahoma City. I just want to personally thank Bob, and I am so in support of the ride-away management ordinance and those... I think that will really help. And I just wanted to thank you all. I know this was not an ideal situation, and it's taken too long, but I just wanted to say I hope we're getting there, and I think this will... It will eventually look nice and... And I think this will, it will eventually look nice, and you'll be pleased with it, so that was it.
Thank you for your work on it. Appreciate it, and your communication with Bob. He's kinda easy to talk to sometimes.
We communicate a lot.
I did tell him jokingly, everyone, if I did get fired over this thing, that I would expect a job over there.
How you feel about sewer plant? We have a new boat that you could be the captain of. I couldn't stop myself, sorry. Okay, Commissioners, if you don't have anything else, I, I make a motion to accept the Oklahoma Gas and Electric Proposal to Elevate or Relocate the Existing Overhead Line to Accommodate Installation of Thirty-Foot Decorative Streetlights on North Main Street at a cost of one hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, a cost reduction from the original amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred, thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, approved at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you shorten this next month? Just kidding. Number sixteen, consideration discussion and possible action, amending the American Rescue Plan Act expenditure approved at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting to Oklahoma Gas and Electric for thirty-foot decorative lights on North Main Street in the amount of forty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-one cents by reducing the approved amount to thirty-six thousand, three hundred and one dollars and seventy-three cents, reflecting a cost reduction from O G and E.
This is a housekeeping item, so we can keep track of the ARPA money.
Absolutely.
Make a motion to amend the American Rescue Act expenditure approved from, at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting to Oklahoma Gas and Electric, O G and E, for thirty decorative streetlights on North.
How'd she give you?
I'll second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
My throat's been cut. I did not have a spot. Number seventeen, consideration discussion and possible action to select a date for a special meeting for combined training. I did it, really?
Yep.
Again? What, what did I skip?
Seventeen.
What?
Seventeen.
I'm reading seventeen.
No, you wrote eighteen.
I bet she doesn't have the. Oh, you might not have the amended one.
I checked my email today. It's not on here. You know I print mine out, right?
We'll start bringing them, just in case.
Do what?
We'll bring them anyway.
Okay, yeah, this is your copy. Gotcha. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents to Oklahoma Gas and Electric to install twenty-five streetlights along the north side of Highway thirty-three from Highway one seventy-seven South Main Street to Sadler Brush Creek Road, utilizing American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds.
It's my understanding these will be metal poles, but they will not, they will not be the black fluted poles, but it will light up thirty-three from Main Street East to Sadler. And I'm working on, I'm working with Corky at O G and E for Main Street West to Ampron. There is twenty-five. I don't know the height of these, but there's twenty-five. That number is good. I verified that at Corky. That's probably where we got confused on the thirty-foot versus thirty.
That's all right. Commissioners, anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve expense in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents to Oklahoma Gas and Electric to install twenty-five streetlights along the north side of Highway thirty-three from Highways one seventy-seven South Main Street to Sadler Brush Creek Road, utilizing American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to select a date for a special meeting for combined training scheduled for the City Commission, Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment Regarding the Comprehensive Plan, Zoning, and Subdivision Regulations. Staff report.
This is on me. This was my bad. You guys had settled for the thirtieth or thirty-first for this training, and then it became the only time I can go to Breckenridge, Colorado this whole year. Go home to Colorado, and so I am asking that we reschedule that to a different date. I will do my best to not change it. I think you guys are thinking sometime in August.
August fifteenth. We have one person not sure if they can be here, and two knows about it.
It's the first day of school.
Thursday night.
That's it. I won't be here.
I could be here, but it'd be tough on me. I mean, it's just the first day of school, that's all.
Yeah.
Some gray hairs. You got it.
What was the other day?
The other day, the twentieth?
I think so. I don't remember. I didn't get responses from everybody on that day.
Twentieth?
So, are Thursdays a problem in general, or is it just that Thursday?
Probably out of state.
Mayor, is Thursday a problem for you in general?
Oh, I resigned all my umpire duties. Where do you go, City of Perkins? Are you good with twenty-second, Sarah?
Should be, yeah. Twenty, yeah, twenty to twenty-second.
Okay, neither. There's gonna be softball games on either day, so it's, it's not bothering me. I'll be here either one.
Are y'all available both of those dates?
The twentieth or the twenty-second?
Yeah, both of them.
As of right now, yes.
Two dates.
I don't know what I'm doing tomorrow, so. Just kidding.
We'll get there.
Taking a nap. It's summertime.
Appreciate y'all. Appreciate Amy working on this.
She's gonna send out an email to the, to the rest of the groups, right?
Correct.
Okay, then, how do we word that? Someone could make a motion to select either, to select those two, one of those two dates, just say, set on those two dates. We don't need to do that. Let's just pass that. Mayor?
Just wanna make a, a pass on number eighteen and wait on Ms. Amy to contact all the rest of the groups. Okay. Y'all made a miss. Oh, I made a miss. Nineteen, consideration discussion and possible action to remove the agenda item, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances from future City Commission agendas.
I wanna explain a little bit about hearings and, and opportunities that citizens have to speak to you. By law, the only time that you're required to allow someone to speak from the public is when it, there is a public hearing. You'll notice that there are times when we have to specifically have a public hearing. It might be a zoning matter, it's the budget. So, that is the only time when you're required to allow members of the public to speak. One of the things that we routinely do, and I think is the procedure here, is that if someone wants to speak regarding an agenda item, then they sign up, or they let you know that the mayor calls on that person, and then they can speak to that agenda item. The third way is what we, it's a universal term, what we call open mic time. Okay, and that is what we've had on our agendas forever and ever, I guess, or since I started, to, you know, public appearances, petitions, communications. Mayor reads it every month, and for the most part, no one's here. So, because things are going, I think, really well in this city right now, we're, we're seeing that. You see that we're actually proactive on things. We're actually being able to be proactive on some things. And so, now is a good time to consider taking that open mic time off of, of your agendas, and that's this agenda item. And I, from a, from a legal perspective, I would encourage it for a couple of reasons. Number one, when open mic time is when someone can get up and can talk for whatever time limit five the mayor says, so can talk for five minutes about anything and everything. But because it's not on the agenda, y'all can't respond, okay? That's really hard, and so it, it invites an Open Meeting Act violation because someone's talking about something, you wanna respond, somebody responds, you just responded, and, you know, it just gets, it's just a little complicating. Second reason is because we are living in a different world than we used to, and people can, have, have come to council meetings to complain about something that's absolutely not on an agenda, and fifty people show up and take five minutes, each of their meeting goes for five hours. Because those councils has given, councils have given people the opportunity and the procedure for doing that. Third, I think it can be dangerous because you're inviting people to speak out about things that somebody else disagrees with, and then now you've got somebody who won't shut, won't be quiet, you know, it just gets, uh, I have, I, the, the, I've been in public life, you know, in front of the public most of my career, and one of the, and I've had people threaten my life and go, oh, well, right now I have to file a witness report. You know, it's not that big a deal, but the, the most, the one time that I thought, that guy is serious, was at a planning commission meeting. I was worried about that. And so, it can be dangerous when you get a room, room full of people who, who disagree about something or, or are passionate about something. So, my recommendation is that you remove that from your agenda items. One of the things that I researched was whether you could remove it from other trust boards, commissions, agendas. You might be able to. I think the boards, you absolutely could, like, the, the. Not, not necessarily flood plain, but definitely Park and Rack Library Board. The one thing that I definitely recommend is that it not be on a board of adjustment agenda, because the board of adjustment doesn't have any discretion about anything. They can only, I'm gonna rephrase that, about what issues they have on their agenda. They don't really have discretion about what issues they have. Somebody's gotta apply for something. They've gotta apply for various, they've got an appeal and administrative decision. They've gotta go through a process to, to even get it on the board of adjustment agenda. So, there's really no place for it in that, in that sense. But at this point, you guys can make the decision for yourselves, and then we're thinking you can decide in the next agenda item about the other boards, the other entities. One of the things that you, you should consider is that if, is then, well, then how do people bring items to our attention that need attention, and how do we get it on an agenda? And one of the things that I wanted to point out to you is that you kind of took care of that when you adopted the Ethics Code. Because the Ethics Code has a provision that says that any commissioner, the city manager or manager or the city attorney can submit items of business replacement on an agenda. And it talks about, you need to do it X days before a meeting, you need to, you know, so the procedure is there. So, if someone comes to you, or someone comes to me or Bob, and, and we wanna put something on an, an agenda, then, then there's a process for that. There's a process.
There's a form.
There's a form for it. For you to put it on.
If a citizen wants to appear before the City Commission.
That's for on a public hearing. Yes, that's, yeah, and that's something we, we may start doing too, is actually having them fill out a form where they fill in the box, I want to be heard on Agenda Item twenty-two. The mayor, the ability to control things a little bit better.
We do have some decorum rules we need to make sure we can follow, and that it stays in our hands. I'm all for taking it off. I don't like to hear from the rest of the Commissioners.
Absolutely. I think this is about protection. I am in full support of it.
I can read this agenda item in my sleep, though, I swear.
And it's one of those things, it's never gonna be a problem till it is, and that's a bad time to change things, you know?
It is a bad time to change things after something negative has already happened. Right. Commissioners, anybody else? Okay. I make a motion to remove the agenda item, quote, "public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances," unquote, from future City Commission agendas.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Number twenty, consideration discussion and possible action to recommend the deletion of the agenda items, quote, "public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances," end quote, from all City Board and Commission agendas to encourage consistency between entities. If it's good for one, it's good for everyone else. They might even have less. I just think it's good for everyone, say it like that.
I'll make a motion to recommend the deletion of the agenda item, quote, "public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances," end quote, from all City Board and Commission agendas to encourage consistency between the entities.
Second.
Actually, I've read that a few times, but if you would be willing to amend your motion in a second.
Take your.
Add it.
To say from all City Board, um, Trust and Commission agendas.
Do I need to reread the whole thing, or can I just amend it to add Trust after City Board?
Does that work? Got it?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
You keep me out of trouble.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Mayor?
Are we gonna, did you wanna take a pause now? And do PIDA?
She was just gonna.
Is that a good or a bad thing that just happened? I think it was, it was a good thing. Okay, we're going to pause the regular meeting of the City of Perkins, and we're gonna move over to the Perkins. going to move over to the, uh, Perkins Industrial Development Authority, special meeting in June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Amy, will you, uh, alter order law and establish a quorum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica, is that us?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
And Renee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Number two, acknowledgement of the Vice Mayor of the City of Perkins, City Commission as the Vice Chair of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority. I make a motion that we acknowledge Justin Henry here, Vice Mayor.
Make a motion loud.
Uh?
Just to acknowledge, man.
Just to acknowledge.
Okay.
Um, hold on, where are we?
It's so acknowledged. You were so acknowledged.
Your motion, your, 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 I mean, we're just to say, uh, we acknowledge.
I hope that's sufficient for you.
It doesn't matter.
Am I finishing my motion, or what are we doing?
Just take no action, and we'll put it in the minutes as, as acknowledged.
Does that come with a plaque or an award or anything like that? Like, an acceptance speech? All right, number three, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five purchase order in the amount of one thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars for the Reconciliation Services LLC to perform their audit. Staff report.
Uh, this agenda item is, because we need to open a purchase order July one for the audit, like, a purchase order is a part of the money for the audit, it's paid for out of PIDA, so that's all this is. We have a regular meeting scheduled for PIDA in July, and we thought if we did these couple of purchase order items of business, we wouldn't have to have another meeting in July, unless something comes up, which we need to have another meeting.
Gotcha.
So we were trying to save our PIDA folks' time a little bit.
And it has to be within our budget time?
Yeah, we, and so we need it by July one, so that we can, or in July, so that we've got it set up, because she'll start work in July.
Okay. Commissioners, anything?
I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five purchase order in the amount of one thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars for Reconciliation Services LLC to perform audit.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
And Veronica, is that us?
Number five, acknowledgement of signature changes at Penn County Bank to remove former PIDA trustees and add current trustees. I have a question. I thought we had, I thought I signed those already.
It's just an acknowledgement.
From Eric?
Oh, so that you all know that it happened.
Okay. Number six, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Perkins Industrial Development Authority operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two hundred dollars to Innerworks to provide computer software support. Not the same thing?
Yeah, same thing, just in case we have an issue, we need to call them for help, we'll be able to, and we'll have a meeting to approve the purchase order.
I make a motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five purchase order in the amount of two hundred dollars to Innerworks to provide computer and software support.
I second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Number five, acknowledgement of signature changes at Penn County Bank to remove former PIDA trustees and add current trustees.
I have a question.
I thought we had, I thought I signed those already.
It's just an acknowledgement.
From Eric?
Oh, so that you all know that it happened.
Okay. Number six, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Perkins Industrial Development Authority operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Jason?
Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to remove the agenda item, quote, "Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances," end quote, from future Perkins Industrial Development Authority agendas.
Rachel just explained to me, I was like, but it's not on this agenda, you know, we, and she said, special meeting, this is a special meeting, that's why it's not all here to, but, um, and I wanted, I actually wanted Renee and Rhonda to hear the last discussion about this item, because, um, no, no, they don't have to come forward, I'm just, oh, you're going, okay, yeah, I just wanted to make, I wanted them to hear that, because, um, so that they can also vote on it here, but also because they need to understand that, um, there is no commission, there is no handbook, Ethics Code, for the PIDA trust members. So there is no established process for you to, for you to add, um, an item to the, to an agenda. So, uh, what, what can happen is that if you all, or the majority of you, choose to remove this item, um, you can also take the action of, um, saying that the, the Ethics Code provisions regarding adding things to agenda would apply to all PIDA members. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Because I had to kind of work through that, that we, that it's not just the commission who already has rules for themselves. Any questions?
Well, if somebody would knew that I was on the board, or the trust, and they wanted to bring something, to sit, refer them to city hall and say, hey, if you want to talk, is that, is that, that's how it works, right? That's coming out.
If you like, don't want to deal with it, then bring them to Bob. Yeah.
Cool.
And, but, if they're saying, if they're, come back and say, well, I've talked and talked to Bob, and he won't help me, and you feel like it needs to be, it's on, it's properly on a PIDA agenda, then you can, then you can put it on the agenda. One of the things that I will remind you that I, these guys, and let, and let you know, um, is that there is a provision that we added just to the, I think, the last, very fairly recently, to the, to the, uh, Ethics Code, that says that you're required to ensure that only appropriate city business is included on an agenda for consideration. The commission and staff will endeavor to avoid including items that involve solely national political issues or policy statements that do not have a direct link to the local useful operations. So you gotta, it's gotta be about PIDA business that's appropriate, um, but, is that used to cross?
Yeah, it's clear now, thank you. Commissioners? I, uh, make a motion to remove the agenda item, "Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances," end quote, from future Perkins Industrial Development Authority agendas.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm great, I make a motion that we adjourn the special meeting of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies, for coming in.
Thanks, y'all.
Appreciate you.
Have a good weekend.
See you Saturday, Renee. Try, are you gonna be out there?
Yeah, we're going, I have a wedding, so I'm not gonna get to go to Palma this year. My nephew's getting married, so.
Well, doggone it.
But, it'll be fun, though.
It looks, it's like, it looks like it's gonna be a fun day.
It will. See y'all.
Okay, number twenty-one, would, we want to take a break before this, before we go back to, uh, hm?
What'd you say?
Take a break before we, uh, go into executive session.
Let me ask you, if you want to go into executive session, then come back and do PPWA, or do you want to take a break, come back and do PPWA, and then executive session?
She wants to take a break.
Let's just take a break, and then I.
And figure it out.
Then go to executive session.
Okay.
And then go to the public works.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Works for me.
Okay.
So, fellow commissioners, if you want me to read stuff.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, Perkins regular meeting, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, item agenda number twenty-one, motion to enter executive session pursuant to twenty-five O dot S dot three oh seven B dot one to discuss the employment promotion, demotion, and/or discipline of the city manager.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Number twenty-two, make a motion to exit executive session and to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number twenty-three, consideration, discussion, and possible action as a result of executive session regarding the employment, promotion, demotion, and/or discipline of the city manager.
Uh, I would make a motion to give Bob the five percent he agreed as requested.
Thank you.
I second it.
Probably worth every penny of it.
Amen.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number twenty-four, new business under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about, or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda, or any revised agenda. Number point five, make a motion to adjourn the Perkins regular commission meeting, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Perkins Public Works Authority regular meeting, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
We need, call to order, roll call, and establish a quorum, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
And Veronica, is that us?
Sorry. Children should not text you during meetings. Consideration and action on consent agenda, commissioners, anyone?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Yeah, I got the second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number four, public appearances, petition, oh, we, do we have, well, we still have to read it, don't we?
The last time? Didn't do it.
I can seriously say it in my sleep.
Yeah.
Try closing your eyes and saying it.
No, camera's on. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under open law, Perkins Public Works Authority board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Let's go to town. Number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the Public Works Authority operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Staff report.
This would just be if you had any questions about the budget.
No, I, I do see the, the water, the Wright Water Company open purchase order for the next fiscal year. It's a lot, but it's a lot better than paying DEQ. So, that was the biggest item I saw.
Not you.
Yes. Commissioners?
Good.
Motion, uh, it's on the next one.
Vice Mayor? He's on it, man, any?
Not the first time.
I followed suit the second time, so there we go. It's bookended.
Six, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the, uh, Perkins Public Works Authority operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million, uh, one hundred, like, one, I'm sorry, let me say that again, my dyslexia now, two million, sixteen thousand, I didn't say that right either, did I?
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand, uh, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Geez.
I make a motion to approve the Perkins Public Works Authority operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution number five dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution amending water rates and sewer service charge and establishing utility deposits, new service fee, lake charges, service call fee, water and sewer tap fees, and landlord administrative fee. Staff?
This is exactly what was voted on at the previous meeting, with the addition of the landlord fee. Um, I, it's, it's cumbersome, so we turned it into a fee versus a deposit, the way it was set up, um, there's landlords that have one rental, one that have fifty rental, and if they want to revert back to water for cleaning in their name, it would just be easier to one-time fee, and then we just switch it back and forth. That's not working all right, and I think makes it easier on their end.
There was one other change, um, and that was that we removed a flat fee charge for customers who might have sewer only, sewer service only, two reasons in the way we don't have any customers like that, and number two, if we ever do, it will be.
Residential?
Any period, sewer only service. I asked Peggy, and she said that you didn't.
That's true about commercial, I think. I think there's residential people with wells.
With sewer only?
If they have a water well.
Can I just ask her if we have any customers that are sewer only? It's off of this one. You want to table this till next month, or? Okay. Because if, we don't want to be extending to sewer only, um, unless we've got a really good agreement and a really good way to, um, collect our sewer bills, because, you know, turning off the sewer service is usually not a possibility, because that will flood sewage right into wherever you turn it off of. And so, um, it's much better if you turn, you turn off water, or electric, which we can't turn off electric, so, um, I just suggested they take that out, so that people won't think that's a service they can come in and just get.
So if there is somebody that actually just has sewage, you bring it back up?
Yeah, I guess so.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number five dash twenty-four, a resolution amending water rates and sewer services charge and establishing utility deposits, new service fee, late charges, service call fee, water and sewage tap fees, and landlord administrative fee.
I second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number eight, consideration, discussion, and possible action to remove the agenda item, quote, "Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances." appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances," end quote, from future Perkins Public Works Authority agendas. I make a, I make a motion that we remove the agenda item, quote, "public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances," end quote, from future Perkins Public Works Authority agendas.
Second.
Mic drop.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, print it out. Just for old time's sake, I thought I would do the motion so I could read it just one more time.
I think we should all pitch in and get her something made with that on it.
Give me a gavel. Bob won't give me a gavel.
You shouldn't have one.
Someone with a pipe right in front of her next time.
Wait till after picture, sir. Number nine. New business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. I make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting of the Perkins Public Works Authority, Tuesday, June 11th, 2024.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna have to like, snap it just a little bit quicker to people rebel over me, and I took.